If you're all waiting in suspense, there we go. Thanks, Jeff. Sorry. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The Board of Education Public Hearing for 2021 Proposed Budget will be held on Tuesday, February 4th at 7:00 PM in the Board of Education Meeting Room. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 11th at 7:30 PM in the Board of Education Meeting Room. We apologize for keeping you waiting. We had a matter that we needed to handle on executive session. I will be quick tonight so that we can move forward. I just wanted to give just a couple of quick remembrances. First, the Challenger disaster happened 34 years ago today, and certainly many of us remember where we were and what we were doing, and that teachers were willing to go into space to teach kids. So just a moment to recognize the sacrifice and the excitement of teachers. Yesterday was the 75th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz, also something worth taking a moment to acknowledge in what humanity can experience and what education can help hopefully prevent. I will say a quick update. At OPC, we continue to discuss both pedestrian walking safety and the busing transportation issues. We talked with the P&amp;Z Chairman and with the First Selectman, who are all very open to kind of sharing information. The First Select Woman referenced the sidewalk plan. Someone did send that to me. It was about five years ago. It is a good plan. We look forward to hearing more about that. P&amp;Z said they'd get back to us with any construction data. I know the Superintendent had some conversations there. So we will continue. We will look for administrative recommendations and updates as they come in, but this issue has not gone away. We continue to try to find the best way forward, and as the Board receives information, I will get it to all of you, and we will take it as we can. With that, I will move to public comment this evening. Please come up and give your name and your address, please, and remember there's a free limit time limit on comments.
Teresa, vote 22, Circle 12 wrote, "Today was the DHSPA's electives meeting, and it reminded me that tutor singers, concert choir, wind ensemble, anything band or orchestra related are actually curricular classes, classes that are graded, classes that are on a transcript." And just a reminder, those kids wear quote-unquote "uniforms" at all those events, and we don't pay for that. So while you guys all talk about the uniform cycle for athletics, which are clearly becoming an issue, keep in mind that kids that are taking a class that requires a uniform, we are not paying for that. So let's keep that in mind when we talk about equity in these budgets. Thanks.
Hi. Julie Best, 38, Red Rose Circle, CDSP co-chair. Referring back to some of the conversation from last week, I wanted to thank you so much for looking at January enrollment to see how it compares to the October enrollment that was presented a few months ago, and see if it impacts the projections for class sizes and sections for next year. So I looked at the numbers also myself, and I just had a couple of thoughts I wanted to share as we work through the budget. This is elementary enrollment and projections overall, and I think we all know that we can't predict what kindergarten enrollments are going to be. It's really hard to figure out what the kindergarten enrollments are, and getting trickier perhaps. But if you look at what was projected for this year versus the actuals, for K to 5, it shows that we're down 10 students versus projections. But if you take the K part of it out, so first grade to fifth grade, we're actually up 34 students versus what was projected, which seems noteworthy. If you look at Henley's enrollment, for example, the totals say that Henley's down six students versus what was projected, but if you take K out, first grade through fifth grade are actually 15 kids over the projected enrollment for the year. And just as an FYI, enrollment at elementary overall is up 10 kids from the October report to the January report. For class sizes and sections for 2021, the materials from last week's meeting did suggest reducing one FTE at Tokenique for next year versus with the change from the October data to the January data, and I did want to respectfully disagree with that recommendation with the rationale that six grades in the elementary schools are already projected to be at, excuse me, above the optimal level for those grades for next year based on current enrollment, just rolling it up for the projections next year. So that's not at optimal. We're at the high level already for all six of those grades. So I don't think we want to go into the year budgeting already having six grades above what we've decided is the optimal class level, and so I think at the very least it's kind of critical that we protect what we have in budget control, and at the very most maybe consider actually budgeting for more class sections for next year. Thanks.
Good evening. Mike Metter, 7 Dulane. I'm here to talk about the status of the wrestling mats for the Darien Wrestling Team. We've got a few safety issues with the current mats that we have. We use two mats for the wrestling program. One is 30 years old, the other one is 15 years old. They don't meet the regulations for size based on the new rules for wrestling. They don't meet the concussion protocol standard for mats of this type. They were designed before those protocols were put in place. The mats aren't portable. They're mats that are designed for permanent installation in a facility that's designed for wrestling program. We don't have that at the high school. So these mats have to be moved around by a group of kids. Kids are getting injured. Kids are, you know, one of our athletes actually injured his back and wasn't able to wrestle for two weeks because of moving the mats from our home meeting. The other problem with the mats is that they aren't antimicrobial. The new mats have a coating on them to prevent diseases like ringworm, which is really prevalent in the wrestling community. We believe that this is a budget item that needs to stay in the budget. It was supposed to be in the budget my son's freshman year, supposed to be in the budget his sophomore year. He's now a junior. We still don't have, you know, updated equipment, and it's a necessary part of the sport. I will let you know that we have looked at alternate sources of funding, and we have been turned down for either being too big a project or too small a project. So we have not been able to find, you know, the just right. We do need two mats. We're hoping that the school can at least provide us one of those to get us started towards a path of, you know, making these kids safe. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment this evening? We'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everybody out. We did have the second meeting of the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee to the Board this morning, so some of you were here, so thank you for starting the day with us and ending the day with us. Today, our consultant, Dr. Lemons, led us through some big sort of concepts that the committee had identified last time. Through that, they developed subsets of questions underneath and sort of looked at what would the evidence be to answer those questions. So we're still in that sort of gathering phase, and in about two weeks, we'll gather around again, but thank you, the Board members who are on that, and there's many people in the audience who are on that, so thank you, the work continues. I want to recognize the RTM last night for unanimously, I'll say, supporting the teacher contract or unanimously not rejecting the teacher contract. Both had the same outcome as a representative, as representatives of the town. I thank them for that support, and I'm sure the Board does also, and is very appreciative of that vote and of that confidence in our teacher staff because, as I have said many, many times, one of the greatest, if not the, asset in this town is our, are our teachers and is the staff of Darien Public Schools. So again, on behalf of the teachers and our Board, thank you to the members of the RTM and then directly to the town. We did receive the architectural bids, and some of those we will discuss this evening. We also received some encouraging news on the health benefits side, and when we get to the budget, I can certainly update the Board on that. The next community conversation is actually scheduled for Thursday, February 6th. High school exams, I see the high schoolers are over there. I believe they've all concluded. Kids are coming up for a wee bit of air, maybe some parents are too, but congratulations on surviving the high school exam schedule. I want to congratulate again the Middlesex Quiz Bowl, who went to Lancaster, Pennsylvania. That was for middle school tournament, and our A team placed first again, B team placed fourth, and our C team placed fifth. So congratulations. Thank you to all the parents who support that program and to the staff who dedicate their time and efforts to the Quiz Bowl. I want to thank Dr. De Silva for putting together a great program of differentiated learning on January 17th for our staff. The Darien Summer School, and Richmond catalog is out, so if you haven't seen it, dariansummerschool.com. It's June 29th through July 31st, and we will have July 3rd off and Saturday, July 4th. I did attend the meeting along with Mr. Dunne at the State Department. That was one of our check-ins along the way at the Department of Construction and Grants for Ox Ridge School, and discussions ensued about size and enrollment generally. They tend to go through some mental exercises with us, but we walked away, we're still moving forward, and have a good plan to, that they are going to support the program, obviously, the building project, so we're moving forward to the next phase. The first meeting of the Ox Ridge Elementary School Security Committee took place this week, so that's a subcommittee of the Building Committee, just to look at security and make recommendations to SLAM and ONG. February 3rd, I believe, at the high school, we are hosting a presentation for parents regarding the transition to ninth grade. I say if you are successful in ninth grade, you will do well in high school. I would imagine that would be well attended by parents, and thank you to the middle school and high school for hosting that. Thank you.
Great. We'll move on to committee reports. Minutes, you'd like me to do minutes.
Question for Dr. Adley.
So we don't do questions?
You can after a report, technically.
Okay, we haven't traditionally, but please go ahead. This is McCann.
Thank you. I had asked, when you talk about the Security Committee, would you just give a little more detail about who's on it and?
Yeah, we have staff here who are on it. Mike's on it, Richard's on it, myself, Tara's on it, First Selectman's on it, and basically our first, a lot of our first responders are on it.
Great. Thank you so much.
People who should be there.
I actually have a quick one, too. For committee report, are you giving a report for the Strategic Planning Committee?
We can together. We didn't plan one, but he gave the brief update.
Yeah, so it's an administrative committee, so I would look for those reports to be coming from the administration at this point. You guys can all get together, the three of you, and put your heads together, but my understanding at the moment is it's not a board committee. We did not appoint those members, so we, maybe you and Dr. Adley should talk about how you best want to deliver that information.
And I think Dr. Lemons had said he's going to come and do formal updates.
Yes, I was just wondering when that formal update, when you envision that first formal update.
Honestly, we have not, we have not settled on the date yet. I think it was too early to actually present something, but, but a couple of meetings into it, maybe the fourth meeting into it or something.
That'd be helpful. Thanks.
Now we'll move on to the approval of minutes. It's requested that the Board approve the following. Minutes of the regular meeting held January 14th, 2020. Mrs. Stein, the second, Mr. Maroney, all in favor. That is unanimous. Minutes of the special meeting held January 21st, 2020. Mr. Maroney and Mrs. Stein, all in favor. That is also unanimous. Thank you. Board committee reports.
The only thing I would, the only thing I would add to Alan's update on Ox Ridge is the design committees are going well. We have the second design committee. It's tweaking the overall design. We're looking for an update to the Ox Ridge community, the school, and the neighbors in March, along with an update to the RTM. In terms of the Security Committee, there is a representative from the Police Commission on the Security Committee. There is a security expert that's associated with SLAM. There's an outside security expert we brought in. Kit, myself, and Rusty sat in on that, and also Chief of Police and one of his right-hand folks sit on that committee also. So it was initial conversation. We went over this document, which is long and a lot of questions. We are one of two states that has a document like this that gets very specific as to school security protocols. There is a shall be met list, and then there is a shall be considered list. So we're going through all of that, and that document will be continuously updated by SLAM and their security experts working with us in terms of these security meetings. So it was really kind of a kickoff, and what SLAM did is just kind of go over the overall school design, the perimeter, parking, traffic, and then we started to look a little bit internally at the school, talked a little bit about windows, line of sight, different things like that. So it was a good kickoff and a good conversation. And just, you know, just so everyone knows, because it's been a big topic of conversation as to what our reimbursement is from the state in terms of the construction of this building, and we were with the number two person up there, and her concern continues to be the size of the school. And she, you know, went over her concerns in terms of size of classrooms, amount of classrooms tied to the enrollment. She understands what we're trying to do in terms of building expansion capability. She liked the fact that we're, the goal here is also to get rid of the portables. We may need some swing space as we do that and do work on some of the other schools. At the end of the day, she liked overall our approach and what we're doing with the design of the school, with the consolidation of ELP and DLC, and kind of her comment around all of it was, well, we can give you a lot of feedback, we can push back a little bit, but she goes, at the end of the day, it's on your dime for the most of it, versus they referenced Norwalk that's getting quite a large reimbursement from the state. So while they have a say in it, so far, I think we're one of the more organized districts that's gone up there and presented in terms of just the building committee and then working with SLAM, and Dr. Adley is very well respected up in that office, so it helps.
Any other board committee reports? Mrs. Ritchie.
On January 22nd, the Finance Committee met with all members present and administration. The committee had a good discussion, and we spoke about contracted speech, transportation, legal expenses, and excess cost. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to view that meeting. It's online. During our discussion, one member expressed concern regarding the timing of the transfer related to the proposed late bus. Administration indicated they did not recommend a delay to this transfer. There was also a request for a formal vote, which we don't do at the committee level. There was also a request for a sense of the meeting, which we typically also don't do, but we did do a sense of the meeting where, again, it was mentioned that there was concern about the proposed transfer related to the late bus. No other member expressed any concern regarding that. So I think at some point it might make sense to go through the process of committees, because I did watch facilities, and things transpired a little bit differently. At one point, it even looked like a vote because hands got raised, so I think that could be confusing to people. So that's just something I wanted to add on to the end of my report, but we can discuss that at a later time. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Maroney, Facilities Committee.
Facilities Committee met last week, and we're moving forward. Architect, which is on the agenda.
Could you speak just into your mic, Mr. Maroney?
Sorry. We met last week, and we are proposing the architect to move forward with the removal of the portable buildings on their schools.
Great. Thank you.
Dennis, can you actually also flip it up? The actual thing?
We'll move on to presentations and discussion. The presentation on the proposed new courses for the Darien High School for the 2021 school year, Dr. De Silva and Mrs. Dunn.
Good evening. So I will turn it over to Mrs. Dunn, who's accompanied by Mr. Janosko and Ms. Samas as well in the audience, and having gone through these courses with Principal Dunn, they are very exciting, and if I could turn back the clock, maybe 10 years or so, I might take that course.
We'd all like to go back to high school, I think. So I'm very happy to be here with Frances and Jacqueline. Really, these are two course offerings of established curriculum that we are now extending in terms of more offerings for our students. So Frances will tell us about the Movable Feast, which is a senior elective in English literature, and Jacqueline will talk about AP art that is now the result of our strong program in digital photography, and our students who are ready to put their portfolios together and present an AP project. So we'll start with Frances, I guess.
It's great to be here tonight. It seems like it was only yesterday, but it was two years ago that I was here with Ellen presenting a slew of one semester senior courses. You may recall those courses. They have been very successful, and I can report that this year we have run six of those courses, which is a sort of a new record in terms of those courses since I've been involved in the district since 2003. You may also recall that we put in place, or let's say we made a promise, that if one of our courses didn't run for two consecutive years, that we would get together and come up with a new course to meet the needs of our seniors. That's what we've done tonight. The course proposal in front of you, it's called A Movable Feast, The Literature of Food and Travel, is a course that we're putting forth to replace a course that hasn't run in two years, and that is our contemporary poetry class. It greatly saddens me that we were not able to run that course for two years, as someone who has taught that course in the past, but I really love what our teachers have put before you in terms of this new course. It is, obviously, the content is different from the other senior offerings that we have, but it is aligned in terms of the expectations and the workload, and I just would say that this represents another instance of our department trying to meet the needs of our students, trying to find entry points, if you will, into great writing and thinking and literature through the maybe different thematic approaches, organizing texts in thematic ways. That's really all I want to say. You can, you can ask questions about the course, but I think a lot of it is self-explanatory if you look at the list of texts. Pretty much everything about this proposal is exactly the same as the courses that I presented to you about two years ago.
So let's take the courses separately. We'll ask about the English course first. Mrs. Stein?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I just want to thank you because when you presented this to us, the Board was really excited, and anecdotally, I've heard amazing feedback from parents and students who think these courses are such a creative, innovative way to get seniors to still love doing English, taking classes, and so thank you. I think it's excellent.
Thank you for that feedback.
Any other board questions? Mr. Burke?
I understand the need for this switch, and I share your dismay about the ending of a poetry class, but when I read the proposal, when I was thinking about poetry, I'll just say that a great quote by President Kennedy was, "When power leads man towards arrogance, poetry reminds him of his limitations. When power narrows the area of man's concern, poetry reminds him of the richness and diversity of existence. When power corrupts, poetry cleanses." So I hope that there's some students up there taking some poetry or learning of it.
You're going to happen over an old class now, Mr. Burke.
Well, we have, if you look over, I mean, the readings that we've included in the proposals are not necessarily what the syllabus will look like for the course, but those are options. There are poetic options on there, and we have tried our best in the other courses to embed poetry in those courses as well. But I love the quote that you just read, you're preaching to the choir, and, you know, if, you know, two years from now, if we don't run this course, then maybe we'll be back with another poetry option.
Can we, I just have a question around the budgetary impact. They said there's no budgetary impact, so are these texts we currently have? Are we, is it a re-allocation of texts?
It's, it is possible that when we, if this passes, that we'll, you know, it's possible that we can explore some, but everything that we listed, we have access to in our bookroom. Most of them are canonical texts. Some are included in some, say Norton anthologies as individual texts within larger works. So we have everything that we have put down here. As we go forward, we may add some other texts to the list.
Great. Mrs. Ritchie.
It's just a comment. It would be nice if we could actually incorporate travel into the class.
That has a budgetary impact, Mrs. Ritchie.
I'm just thinking it would really tie in well.
I know the perfect place.
Noted.
All right. Are there any other questions on this course? All right, then I'm going to let Mrs. Samas go in terms of motions, and we'll make motions afterwards. Thank you very much, Mr. Janosko.
Oh, no possible action. Okay. Good evening. So we are looking to add an AP option for our digital students, either through photography or graphic design. To give you a little bit of history of AP in the Art Department, 10 years ago, we ran our first AP Drawing and Painting Course. We ran just the drawing portfolio. About five years later, we added the 2D Design Portfolio, so students in a drawing and painting class could take both either the drawing or the 2D portfolio. Three years ago, we added the AP 3D Portfolio, which is the Furmas Air Ceramic Students, and so now we're looking to allow our students that are interested in graphic design or digital photography or black and white photography to be able to experience the AP course through that avenue. So the setup of it is pretty similar to our other classes. It's two years of prereqs. It's a little bit different. It's not a straight line, I should say, like the other courses. It's not a one, two, three scenario. So if you look on page two, you can see how students have to take four courses in total. They have to be a sequence, but they can choose if they want to take it coming through digital photography and black and white photography, or digital photography and graphic design one and two. So they're going to have four courses, two full years, before getting to that AP portfolio piece. The AP portfolio is a very rigorous exam. It's one of those time-consuming exams, my students say, from all of their other exams that they take because of the amount of outside hours that they have to put into creating their portfolios. It's 20 pieces. 15 of them are what's called a sustained investigation, where they're taking an idea that they create and come up with, and then are going to investigate it or explore it over these 15 images throughout the entire year, and then five quality pieces. So it's a 20-piece portfolio that they will have at the end of the year. That's kind of my course.
Any board questions?
You guys are all.
Four questions on the class. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you will see these come back next week for approval. There's no action this evening. So last chance before everyone goes, or else you have to wait until next meeting. Okay? All right. We will move on to discussion and possible action on the appointment of the architectural firm for the removal of portable and library. Dr. Adley and Mr. Maroney.
So we had five firms that gave us proposals on removing the.
Yeah, you've got to fall close. It's the block.
We had, we had five firms that elected to, now it's too close, elected to come and give us bids, and we, at the Facilities Committee, we recommended Northeast Collaborative to move forward with the project.
Do you want to give any thought to reasons on why Northeast Collaborative?
I leave that to Dr. Adley because he is, him, but they were honestly the lowest-priced bid, and we feel comfortable with their proposal.
So all the companies worked with Mike and Richard and went around the schools that we're addressing here and to look at the libraries, the portables, and the buildings themselves. So the bid came in, as you see in your memorandum, the lowest bid being the Northeast Collaborative, and based on just a review of some of the work they've done, and also the firm itself. Administration was happy to, they didn't say a reason not to take the lowest bid. bid, in this case, there wasn't a reason not to do that. And I will say in full disclosure, that Northeast Collaborative have done some work in, in Granby, but that's not, that's neither here nor there to me, to be honest with you. I was happy to recommend another architectural firm to put in a bid, that's, I just want to recognize that, but we, they do good work, right? I do have some recommendations here that were both requested, so I'm, I'm happy to distribute those. I don't know if Richard or, or Mike, I don't want to call people from the floor, but if they have other perspectives, but we did a good review of people's submission, and I just don't see a reason not to, to go with the lowest bid, in this case, if I did, or any of my colleagues here, we would, we would recommend to do that, but that's not the case, so.
Any questions? Mr. Burke?
Mike, do you have any personal experience with them or knowledge or any insight that you could share?
I've worked with two of the firms before, Silver Petriselli and Gisafi Associates. And this firm here, Northeast, they had a similar body of work and experience, and the resumes of the people seemed the same, so there was nothing that was glaring that said, oh no, go with somebody else, you know? They seemed to be a very good imaginative, competent firm, and so, when Dr. Adley and Rich and I met to discuss it with the finance, I mean, with the facilities committee, there, there were no negatives from anybody who had dealt with, you know, any of the firms, actually, they all had very good reputations and similar backgrounds. So, we're comfortable recommending Northeast.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to make it clear, we didn't meet with the consultants. We were basing it upon discussions that we had with staff, just to make that clear. So we're basing our support for staff's recommendation, is the way I recommend our opinion.
I just pass around to, to members of the board some of the work done by Northeast Collaborative from old Lime, where they did the libraries and similar renovations, to my own district, to Stanford Technical House School, so there's, there's some recommendations, and there are some examples of their work.
Any other, Mrs. Ritchie?
So this is a unique project in that it's, I, I don't know if anyone's ever done anything like, do you know that they've done something similar, or is this something unique that we're doing with eliminating portables and then tying it into something really creative, which is reimagining our libraries?
So they had a, they, they did, in Lime, they did, it was strictly a library, library renovation project. My own personal experience with them is in redesigning space for collapsing schools and expanding schools, so this is not a foreign concept to them in terms of utilization of space.
And while it's not working on the final project itself, they, you think that would be an easy transition for them if they would be the ones to work on the actual project itself?
An easy transition?
From designing to implementation, so in other words, if, at some point, this project will come to fruition, and the architect will need to be involved in that process.
Yes.
So then they could potentially be in phase two, so to speak.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, to be clear, we would need to go out to bid.
Yes.
Right, and so, yeah.
So it could be someone else, but that, you know...
Yeah, but I've seen, I've actually firsthand of them working with the companies, yes.
The proposal's actually outlined, you know, what the next steps could be if they, you know, but again, it would have to go through proper approval.
Any other questions? All right, with that, can I have a motion to approve the appointment of Northeast Collaborative for the architectural study to remove portables and library redesign? Mr. Maroni, so moves. Mr. Burke, seconds. All in favor? That is Maroni, myself, everyone but Mr. Dineen, who will be absent for this vote. We will move forward to the discussion on the November and December 2019 and '20 financial report and possible action on budget transfers. Mr. Rudel and Mrs. Ritchie?
Sure. So we have two monthly financial reports, November and December, so we'll start with November. So through November, we do have a positive year-end forecast of $310,419, or 0.31%, which is really in line with the previous reports. The general education RCs do show a positive surplus of $459,000, with special education RCs forecasted of a negative $148,000. As in the past, our financial report is broken up into four categories, the first being salaries. In total, salaries are forecasted at a positive $502,000. They are broken out primarily from $241,000 of salary savings. As in previous reports, we do have savings in the column change category for just $57,000. Budget control remains untouched at $263,000, and we are forecasting as of November, a deficit of contracted speech services for $100,000, though in December, we did true that up slightly. Going to operating, similar to previous months, we are anticipating $49,960 to the negative, the first being the report for Northeast Collaborative, so now that that's been approved, we'll bring a transfer forward for the January report, that would be in consulting services, contracted services for the adult ed program that we contract with Stanford Public Schools, special ed legal fees. We are forecasting a slight positive variance in special education transportation of $29,000, and then tuition non-public of a slight negative variance of just over $14,000. The next category fixed is a positive just under $31,000, with utilities at a positive $28,000, workers' compensation just over $8,000, transportation as a negative variance of $16,500, which is a transfer in the December report, and then unemployment insurance of $10,660. Revenue, as we've talked about in previous reports, we are anticipating receiving less excess cost revenue than budget, so that is a negative $174,000. And then we have received $1,384 for Medicaid reimbursement, so revenue is forecasted at a negative $172,000. And as I mentioned, no transfers for the month of November, however, when we do the December report, we do have two transfers.
Great. Any budget questions?
I, I had asked for maybe just an overview of budget control and how we are accounting for that.
Sure.
So, it doesn't have to be this evening, but it's...
Do it now.
Oh, okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
So we do have a couple of categories within the chart of accounts where no expenses would ever be posted, and budget control is one of those. The easiest way to explain how budget control would work would be to give an example. So let's say there was a need for an extra section at Tokenique for kindergarten for enrollment, the administration would bring to the board a recommendation that we would need to add an extra class section. If that were to be approved, we would add that class section through budget control. It wouldn't be appropriate to expense the expense for the teacher in budget control, as it would distort the Tokenique budget. So what ended up happening is, the teacher would be hired for, let's say, kindergarten in this example, we would pay that salary out of that kindergarten line item, and then we would make an adjustment or a transfer out of budget control for whatever the salary amount is for that teacher into the Tokenique kindergarten line item, and that's how you would essentially draw off budget control. So you'll never actually see an expenditure hit, but you could still see those funds used. It's just kind of a reallocation from one account to another. It's very similar to what contract support looks like within the chart of accounts or even staff turnover.
Okay, so just to be clear, it's, it's a unique way of accounting, it doesn't look like our typical accounts would look.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, December?
So this is the December financial report. We are forecasting a year-end positive forecast of $335,669, or 0.34%. So that is a slight increase from the November report. We do have a vacant position at the high school, a vacant secretarial position, that is a position recommended not to be filled in the fiscal '21 budget, so we're accounting that salary savings for the rest of the year in the forecast. The general RCs have a forecast surplus of $490,680, and the special education RCs a negative forecast of $155,000. So again, we have four categories within the financial reports, the first being salaries, salary savings of $318,000, and again, that difference is largely that secretary at the high school. Column change, budget control again remains untouched, contracted services for $112,400 deficit, that is one of the two transfers to go for, forward for approval today, so total salary forecast savings of $526,000. Operating remains the same as the previous month at $49,960, again, it's, it's the Northeast study, contracted services for adult ed, special ed legal fees, tuition, and then transportation. Utilities is relatively similar to the previous, previous month at $31,521 to the positive, the same category as utilities, workers' compensation, transportation, which is one of the two transfers for approval, and then unemployment insurance. Revenue is relatively similar, we did receive a little bit, a few hundred dollars more in Medicaid reimbursement, so that's up about $600 from the November forecast, so a negative variance of $172,000 in revenue. So there are two transfers, the first one being for contracted speech, for $112,400, these are for speech services for students written within their IEPs. We are recommending taking those from, funds from various salary savings, those were the categories that we mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, so we do have salary savings within the secretary line item, the aid line item, the cess facilitator line item, and as we mentioned, the column change line item. And then the second transfer is for $16,500, and that was for the addition of a late bus for Darian High School that the superintendent authorized. There was a question at finance committee about the breakdown of the costs, so it is two late buses, it's a north bus and then a south bus, and it's just over $68 a day. It was added in December, so we are assuming it's gonna stay for the rest of the year, so it would be about 120 days.
Any board questions? Mr. Seeny?
So, Dr. Adley, if you just could reiterate what you said about the bus routes at the committee meeting and why you implemented it, that'd be helpful, because I thought that was pretty insightful.
So, so this bus, the bus issues have been going on, like, honestly, from September, and I appreciate the parents' patience on it, so to try to be responsive, we met with some parents, and to try to be responsive as best we could. We made an accommodation, we were able to get the children, the students, on the bus in the morning, for the most part, I think that, that has played out. This provided an opportunity to put on a late bus in the afternoon for, for the students to get from the high school. Admittedly, it doesn't leave at the same time, it's, it's a later bus, so the students relatively have to stay a wee bit later, either in the cafeteria or the library. And that really is not being fully utilized at this point, so we're gonna have to sort of look at it, because it's, it's had a handful of, of kids on the bus, and now it's even dwindling very lower than that, so we're gonna have to make a decision about it. But the bottom line with it was, it was a good faith effort to be reasonable and see if I could come up with an alternative to, to conundrum.
And how much later are kids staying after school?
About forty-five minutes.
Any other board questions? Mrs. Ritchie?
Just a follow-up, I think they brought it up in the meeting, and I don't, the math wasn't working out, so I, did, did you look at that?
So it's sixty-eight, I think I had said seventy-eight, sixty-eight, seventy-five a day, 120 days, and there's two buses, a north bus and a south bus. So each bus is a little over $8,000.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, with that, can I entertain a motion to approve the transfers as proposed in the December financial report? Mr. Burke and Mr. Dineen, all in favor? Can we raise our hands up so we can see? That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Rudel and Mrs. Ritchie, for all of your help and work on that. We will move up to follow-up discussion on questions regarding the 2020-2021 proposed budget of the Board of Education.
So just to clarify, are we giving possible adds or cuts?
So tonight, everyone should be prepared that we will run RC through RC, and they should indicate if something is up in their mind for an add or a cut, which will signal to the public and help inform the public hearing on the fourth.
So are we gonna go by RC at this point?
No, we'll go through the questions, because that might change people's feelings one way or another, and then, before the night closes, we will go through at the end of this, and we'll go RC, RC, through RC. So, Dr. Adley, you are up.
Yeah, so, I'll try not to read these, the board did receive these in their packet, so we, we have answered these with the appropriate attachments, so if, if we wanted just to, to speak to the issues, I'm happy to address any of the questions.
Does anyone have follow-up questions after receiving the answers? Mrs. McCammon?
So, I had asked for some financial detail about the budget drivers in special education. I appreciate that there's more information here. This is not quite what I was looking for, but I think it's probably a longer conversation. I respect that there's a genuine desire to figure out the best way to report forward without impacting student privacy. So my ask is not within the context of this budget, but that we take a good look at talking about how we think about special education strategically, talk about how we talk about our program, but also the financial implications of our program, but in a way that is respectful to our audience. But I think trying to cram it inside of the parameters of the budget conversation is challenging, so that's my, my respectful ask.
Respectfully received, thank you.
Any other budget questions? No questions, no follow-up. Does that mean everyone's prepared to go RC through RC?
No, just, sorry, I was just trying to catch up. On the legal, on the legal front, you broke out the legal expenses, I believe?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I look at...
Why don't we scroll down to that answer? Okay, go ahead.
I look at items like FOIA and understanding some other specific instances of cases and such. Are we comfortable with the cut number, I'm sorry, are we, are we comfortable with the cut number, you know, based on past history, might, we might have had a number of outliers? Is that, I guess what I'm getting at is, the decline from 248 to 116, does that account for those one timers, if you will, in your estimations going forward?
So the 116 is the actual spent expenditure for this year?
I'm sorry, it's...
Right, so the 248 is what the district, district spent on administrative legal fees, the 116 is what we have spent essentially through the beginning of January.
So then when we go to the next year?
So the next year, I believe the budget is a little bit higher, and that's largely driven by increased rates for shipping in Goodwin.
Could I just follow up on that?
Yeah, Mrs. Ritchie.
So, we're looking at actual fiscal year '20, but that, sometimes the bills are lagging, so that isn't going to be what the final number looks like, because your estimated for '20 is...
Correct, so those, those bills are only through November, so even though we're in January, there is usually a pretty significant lag from legal bills, so we would expect it to be much closer to that, to 200 plus.
So you would expect it to be at the 262 where we're estimating right now?
Well, no, to be clear, we're actually, the, what the administration is recommending is a 3% increase in this next budget, up to 207, it's 282.
I'm talking about 20 estimated from our current year estimate, so I just...
Yeah, but I think we're, we're mixing apples and oranges, so there's actual a, an increase?
So there is an increase from the current year's budget. We are asking for it to be 270 versus the 262. Part of the reason for the increase is there are increased rates from shipping in Goodwin. Just as an example, the senior partner's going from 420 an hour to 450 an hour, some of the partners are going from 385 to 410 an hour, so those increases will increase expenditures, even if you have a similar usage.
Okay, so, Mr. Seeny, did that answer your first question?
So it's basically on rates, is, is the, the rate increase is driving most of this increase?
Correct, so typically, you would probably expect your legal fees to go down next year, because you don't have the teacher contract, but because you're gonna have an increased expenditure for the rate that you're gonna pay for the attorneys, that is one of the primary reasons we're expecting it to go up.
Although we'll have an administrator's contract?
Correct.
Yes, okay. And Mrs. Ritchie, does that answer where you...
I, I didn't have a question, I just wanted to clarify that fiscal year '20 is not completely finished, so we're gonna have a lot of expenses coming up. The question I have on the FOIA number, because there's such a big difference between last year and this current fiscal year, are we, is that also something that gets lagged in terms of bill, billing, or, in terms, so are we gonna, should we expect more to hit that line?
So part of it is, you do have people in-house who are doing that work, Marge is doing some of that work, secretarial work, and then it's just a product of when you actually get those FOIA requests.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, any other follow-up on the questions and answers provided by the administration? Okay, so is everyone prepared to go RC by RC and indicate add or cut? Mr. Dineen, I'll ask you to take notes, Mrs. Ritchie, I'll ask you to take notes, Mr. Rudel, I believe you'll take notes, are someone on that side of the rounds? And we will go from there.
Just to be...
I'm sorry, just, go ahead.
Just to be clear, this isn't binding by any means, this is just...
This is not binding, it is helpful if you can attach a number, it is not necessary, it is just to really, in full transparency, we have always done it this way so that the public could react to us. If we have no intention of cutting or adding something, they know what to speak to or what maybe they might choose not to.
And then there was, my other question, sorry, is, there was some questions or discussion with the board... And then there was, my other question, sorry, is there was some questions or discussion with the Board of Finance over transfers and they did a bit of a study, where does that kind of discussion stand and answers to that?
Dr. Adley?
We have, we have just concluded internally our responses to those questions or our responses to the RTM Education Committee, RTM FMB Committee. And for the Board of Finance, we are ready to present those findings in whatever form they would like to be presented.
So, answer?
I guess how, I guess is the follow-up on that.
So typically what would happen is that in our work sessions, we go through the questions. Dr. Adley and the administration team are actually done with them early. So the question now will go out to the committee chairs to say, how would you like to? But typically in our work session, we go through question by question with them. The fact that they're ready early just allows us to reach out to the board chairs earlier and say, how would you like to handle it? Do you want to wait till our scheduled meeting or anything else?
Thanks.
Mrs. Ritchie.
As people are bringing things up, if you could please just say the account, we're in the RC, but make sure you say the account number so that I can follow along.
Thank you. It'll help, it'll help us prepare notes for our-
Go slowly, forget, really slowly.
Mrs. McCammon.
Back on the point about the questions for the RTM and the Board of Finance, if the Board of Education could see those before they get distributed, please, that would be appreciated.
Before, yes?
Before.
Is that what the board would like? I mean, one person's requesting that, as a board, we have to actually tell the administration how to handle work?
Isn't that historically how we've done it?
Historically, no, we have not put them out for board edits beforehand. It doesn't mean that we can't.
But we usually get them before, like-
Yeah, they usually, they usually go out beforehand. We're just so ahead of schedule that I think-
Before the meeting, like we don't get them when-
Yes, so I think, Mrs. McCammon, if I'm hearing the request, but we as a board have to agree it just so the administration knows what to do. What you're asking is you would like to see all the answers before they go to the committee chairs?
Correct.
Okay, is everyone in agreement with that?
I'm confused, are we putting it out there so that we can comment on it prior to being distributed? Because typically I don't think we do that.
No, but I'm looking for the way you want to order work because I have to tell the administration how they'd like-
Well, you just said you always send it before, so typically.
Usually you receive it as like FYI, we're going, the administration's going out with their answers. I think what Mrs. Ritchie's asking is Mrs. McCammon looking to edit them or comment on them prior to them going to the boards?
I don't know that it's necessarily an intention to edit, but just to make sure that it's, there are times when there are questions that are asked by those committees that are not representative of what's been discussed at the board table. So to the extent that anything could be answered that might be outside of the discussion, I just want to make sure we see what's being discussed.
So again, what I need to hear then from the full board is do they feel that's the case? And/or would they like the chance to comment or edit on questions? Feeling that the administration may not have fully properly represented the board discussion. I just need to, just when we do this, I just need to know how to do it and have it not be, I wanted it this way, I wanted it that way. So if we can just have clear instructions, then we can get it both to the board and to the committees as soon as possible.
My feedback, would we just get it to us before it goes to them?
Okay, Mrs. Stein.
I mean, I like the way we've done it where we receive it just prior to the meetings.
Okay, Mrs. McCammon.
I'd like the opportunity to review it first, so perhaps twenty-four hours before it goes out.
Okay, Mr. Burke?
I'm fine with the current procedure.
Mr. Brown? Mrs. Ritchie?
I'm happy with the way we're doing this right now.
Mr. Danine?
I'm fine with the way it's done.
Mr. Murray?
I would like twenty-four hours.
Okay, so I don't think there's any opposition to getting it to the board twenty-four hours before it goes to the committee chairs. I will make sure that happens, thank you.
May I just clarify, I'm sure, I can't have a meeting offline about it though, right? I mean, so just-
No, it'll be a read-only, yeah. Any other follow-up questions? Okay, so we will go RC by RC. RC one, Darian High School, are there any proposed adds or cuts? Mrs. Ritchie?
I'm looking at two one three zero two substitute budgets.
These don't need seconds, these don't, these are just what each individual board member is looking at. Any other in RC one? Oh, you can't hear me? All right, it's our, it's our budget books, they push our mics away, so everyone project and pull your mics close. RC two, Fitch Academy.
So what is, what is she recommending?
Do you have a number you're signing to have?
I don't have a number.
Okay, everyone try to have a number if you can, but you don't need to. But an add or a cut?
It would be a cut.
A cut.
Could I, could I add to that conversation? And that my thought is, I've just been looking, I thought I had a total number. I'd like a cut to the total substitute budget based on the new contract. And I think the support that the teachers have gotten, I think it's something we want them to continue to focus on. So I would come up with a cut across the total substitute budget and let the administration figure out within each school where those cuts come.
Okay, do you have a total dollar amount cut you'd like to see?
Fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you, as we hit substitutes in every line, we don't need to reiterate that. We'll just understand unless someone feels specifically in one school.
I won't really, no.
It's fine, you beat Duke to the punch.
Sorry, Duke.
I'm glad you brought it up.
I would like, looking at RC two one three zero six, a deeper understanding of teachers of the gifted. I don't know whether it'll be an add or a cut, or it may just be a discussion.
Is it RC two?
Nope, I'm in RC one.
Can I add to that discussion? If there's any way to understand, because I know high school is looking at enrollment right now, how many students are projected to be in the program next year? If we can figure it out before, I think that would-
We have that number tentatively as of right now.
So I think that would be helpful to inform the discussion.
Okay, anything else in RC one?
Kara, what, did you say what number?
It is teachers of the gifted, two one three zero six.
Quick follow-up? Just if we're looking at substitutes across the board, if we're looking at this program, could we look at what would happen reallocating potentially some of these funds to the middle school or lower grades as opposed to what would happen with the high schools, can we look across the board as well?
So you would, but what you're looking for is maybe a cut in reallocation?
I'd like some more information as to that's something that would be feasible or make sense? And then yes, what that would look like financially?
This is for the teachers of the gifted?
This is for the teachers of the gifted.
Any else in RC one?
Can we clarify that?
I'm sorry, David, sorry, I just, can we just be, just hear you again of what you wanted to do?
I'm just trying to think, so when, I got a little background to get to where I'm going. So in the high school, there's a lot more options, there's a lot more variability in classes. We have the program very specialized in the middle school and elementary schools. Specialized is probably not the best word. If we move the funding out of the high school and reallocated that to the middle schools or elementary schools, is that something we'd like to do and would that be something to be considered? I would just like a little more information around that idea.
Thank you.
Anything else in RC one? RC two, Fitch Academy? Nothing? RC three, Middlesex? Are you looking, Mrs., I don't know if that's a hand up or a look?
Well, it's not in Middlesex, it's in, no, it's in, sorry.
Okay, RC five, Hindley?
I forgot my budget book I brought last year, so I apologize.
RC seven, Holmes? RC ten, I'm sorry, yep, RC ten, Tokenique? We skip, did I skip Ox, Holmes, oh, sorry, RC eight, Ox Ridge? I'm skipping Ox Ridge and Royal, I don't have anything for them. Ox, RC nine, Royal? RC ten, Tokenique? RC eleven, Athletics? Hands going up, Mrs. Stein?
I would like to, oh, got it, if I'm in line, I'm sorry, Deb, okay. Uniform?
One zero two thousand and one?
Two zero zero one, I would like to add back in the uniforms that were the deferment. And then I would also like to add back in the wrestling mat.
Which is ninety-five dollars.
It's not, I don't think it doesn't, I don't think the wrestling mat has a number attached to it.
They did, they did in a presentation, it was ninety-three and a half.
No, I mean, it doesn't have an art, like one of your-
It's not in the description.
So I would like to add the cost for the wrestling mat.
Wouldn't that be under one zero two?
Yeah, it's in the same account, I think it's under equipment. Dr. Adley can tell us if it's not. Dr. Adley, I'm curious, some of the information we heard tonight about concussion ratings and antimicrobial, can you look into that? Because I'm, concussion ratings concern me, one mat, two mats. But having kids wrestling on mats, that isn't, I just need to hear that we believe that these mats are protecting our children as much as we protect children in other sports because I think we do care about wrestlers on mats, just like we care about children in sports. So if you could follow up, because I think that if we feel that we don't have the right safety material, that might determine whether I put in one or two mats.
I agree, and my question is, is the cost for both mats, would that be the same? Is it two of the same mats? Whatever the placeholder number is, I would like to see both dollar, the dollar numbers for both mats and the one we already have. So I don't know how-
But let's speak, yeah, let's speak specifically on some of the information we heard tonight.
Yeah, so I heard some information today and tonight and I'll follow up accordingly, particularly regarding safety.
Okay.
Portability was another one.
Yeah, well, I think all of it, our kids' safety, their concussions, their backs, their, their whole bodies are important to us. Mr. Danine and Mr. Burke?
I just think the information received from Mr. Nutter tonight is different or contradicts the information from the athletic director. So I think we have to understand how many mats, the age of the mats, what's the usual lifespan of the mats, and then what is new equipment? Again, it goes to equity, we've got millions of dollars put into fields up there and other athletic equipments. To have thirty-year-old mats is beyond me in this district, you know? And to have kids moving around mats and not have the right concussion protocol or the right health protocol with respect to these mats, it's just unacceptable.
Okay, Mr. Burke?
Yep, and related to what Mr. Danine said and what was said in public comments, so there, I mean, there's a difference between something that's okay because it's grandfathered in as opposed to a new mat. So I want, I don't want to hear that it's safe because we're meeting requirements or we don't have to meet particular requirements. So just a real assertive statement as to the safety of those mats is what I'm looking for.
Mr. Brown?
Just following up on the comments that were made earlier tonight, I heard a new fact that it wasn't just the mats, but it was the facility in total wasn't designed properly or there was an issue around?
If I, if I understood it correctly, they were mats that were meant to be in like a wrestling room as stationary.
But we're lacking the stationery, so is there a bigger question? I would direct this to the athletic director, can we get some more information about that?
Or, or, sorry, I didn't-
No, please.
The word portability, that's what I meant, like if we're going to have portable mats, make sure we buy portable mats. Because we don't have a wrestling.
Well, I'm just concerned if we have a safety issue around the entire facility or the entire design of where this happens. If there's perhaps a bigger issue than just the mats themselves, I'd hate to have, you know, repeated use of something that's not in a safe environment overall if there's more than just the mats that are something we should be considering.
Mrs. McCammon?
Given that the framework for the going into setting up the budget was, you know, trying to preserve the classroom experience and that there are a number of cuts throughout the budget, including to secretarial staff, if we're going to be adding in athletics back, then I think we need to put the new coaches on the chopping block. Because I think there are trade-offs and we're making some, and so.
That was one?
That's one zero one zero zero two.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the account number?
One zero one zero zero two, stipends.
Okay, with that discussion too, then I'd like to incorporate safety of students on the field.
What is that?
Well, I think what Mrs. McCammon, correct me if I'm wrong, is saying that if we have to make hard choices, this is one of the choices, but then part of that needs to be like, well then how many students do we have on the field? And are they safe? And are these coaches a nice-to-have or required for supervision and safety? So it may be a cut, a stay, an add for all I know, but it's on the line.
And-
So are these coaches necessary for safety?
Well, I think Mrs. McCammon's saying we might need to make hard choices, so she's putting up on as a cut. And I think before we make that understanding, we're making hard choices, we need to understand the safety implications throughout all this.
Probably safety and participation combined, but yes.
And that number was eighteen thousand two thirty-one.
Anything else in athletics? Okay, maintenance, usually oft talked about, but not this year, anything on maintenance? Nothing? RC thirteen, music. I'd like to understand again the comments during public comment, that these are graded classes, are these uniforms, outfits, are they required for the class? Are, I'd like to understand that a little more. And I don't know where they fall, which RC they fall into. I have roughly a hundred, my notes say music uniforms, question mark, are roughly a hundred dollars per uniform, but I'm not sure where they would fall because parents are paying for them. I'd like to understand what are the requirements, are they required in order to compete? Are they required as part of festivals, are they preferred? I'd just like to hear. Anything else in music? Art, RC fourteen? Nothing? RC fifteen, technology? Mrs. Ritchie?
Line or count one two three zero two one? I'd be looking for a cut.
How much?
A mat might be off, but I think I'm looking for sixty-five thousand. And that would be the cut in the bag, in the blocks. I'd be saying to purchase twenty blocks, twenty-five, purchase thirty blocks of twenty-five Chromebooks. And the difference I think is sixty-five thousand.
Sorry, Deb, that was one two three zero, Deb two one?
One two three zero two one. Thank you, computer, correct it.
Anyone else? Mrs. McCammon?
We talked about the freshman iPad purchase and that we are looking for, to understand better in February. So that's on the table.
Do you have a dollar amount you want to assign to that?
Two hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred.
I'm sorry, can you just say that again?
Two hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred.
And the fresh, it's the freshman iPad. And you're taking that from the same account? I'm just doing this from my notes, so I'm making my notes right.
It's one two three zero two one, computer, correct it.
Okay. Administration? RC sixteen? Michael Burke?
Legal Services, one two zero zero four. Despite their pay raises, I'd like to propose a cut of the eight thousand dollar increase.
So an eight thousand dollar cut?
Is that effectively saying go back to shipment and go and tell them now?
No, we're anticipating that maybe our legal expenses won't be so vast or maybe it would be appropriate if we had some inordinate legal expense that might be a good example or place to go-
if we had some inordinate legal expense that might be a good example or place to go back and ask for more money because of an emergent legal problem as opposed to, uh, I can see like making sure we're okay with all the other programming matters, but if it becomes an unexpected legal expense, that might be appropriate to go back to the Board of Finance and ask for that.
Any other questions? RC seventeen, health. Seeing nothing. RC eighteen, personnel. Anything?
I think some of the questions that came out from the RTM and Board of Finance Committee meetings are gonna be helpful in addressing this, so it's an area I'm watching until we get answers from, so.
Uh, so do you want to put an add or a cut on any?
Uh, I can't. It would be probably a cut, but I can't put any number on it until we get a little more clarity based on the study that.
Can you be specific about the account?
I can't yet.
So not turnover, contract support?
Yeah.
Budget control.
Budget control, recruitment, nowhere?
Not ready, I'm not ready. Somewhere in there. Not informed enough to make a comment, yes.
So is there a board question that will help?
No, we're, we're waiting the, uh, what we just discussed, the report that's going back to the Board of Finance on the transfers.
No, I'm just trying to help you along. As a board member, you could ask questions the administration could answer. It might help you.
So if there, if there's a question contained within that Board of Finance packet, you can ask that question right now.
You can take up that question as a board member, right now.
See, I, I was waiting for a, we were just told we were gonna be getting something from the administration regarding that transfer request and that study, where there were big numbers that, that are certain accounts of which fit in this area. So I'm not prepared to ask, ask that question right now until I see what the administration comes back to as an answer to that question that's been asked by.
Okay, so you want to wait for the Board of Finance questions that they've posed, but you're signaling a possible cut to RC eighteen?
Sorry, I didn't make that clear.
And that will let the Board of Finance.
But you're uncertain what, what account it would come out of.
Correct, because I don't have any answer.
Dennis.
So I'd like to look at account thirty-one thousand, budget control. And I'm with Mr. Seeny, I'm not sure if this is an add or a subtraction, but I just want, you know, hearing public comment again, I think there's a question of do we, are we staffed enough? Are we staffed appropriately in, in, or the ELL teacher? Do we need to understand what that's going to be, or possibly have an ELL teacher, and understand what, what, what is in that budget control number for us a little more?
Okay, so I'm just trying to prompt board members that they can actually get answers faster if they have a specific question rather than waiting for someone else's report.
I, I think my point is just, we heard public comment tonight. I need to do a little more research and check her numbers versus what I have.
Okay.
So I want to do a little more research that I can't do in, in the, while we're on, in the midst of a meeting.
Okay.
But you might be looking to add or cut.
Or cut.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
You don't know.
Mrs. McCammon.
Um, I'm not, okay. I, I asked last time that the ELL teacher be specifically added to the narrative. That could have an impact on the number either way, but I want to make sure that we've specifically noted that if ELL goes over, that we're dipping into that pot. And the reason I say that it should be explicitly in the narrative is if the enrollment analysis turns up that we're really at the right number with four, then we need to talk about adding five. If the enrollment analysis turns up that we're at the right number with two, then I want to make sure it's three. So.
So again, that's just board-ordered work, so does the board want to see ELL specifically added to the narrative? And I can do a sense of the meeting to figure it out, or do they feel that the description of personnel is a mess? Mr. Seeny?
Sure.
Mrs. Stein.
I, I'm, I'm.
It's okay, it's not, you can go either way.
I'm like trying to, I'm trying to find all the things I'm putting, because I don't have my budget book, so on the ELL.
We know how Mrs. McCammon feels, Mr. Burke.
I'm like trying to fill my cuss mats.
Mr.?
Yeah, so we'd like to work so hard.
Okay.
I think that's fine. I think it, I already thought it could be used, but if we want to explicitly say it, that would be fine.
I think it's unnecessary personnel. I think if we just do one, we, we might add OT there, we might add PT. Like, I don't know that we can list it out. I'm not, so I, I worry about highlighting one staff versus other, but that's my opinion. Mr. Danine.
I, I think, I don't care either way. I trust the administration is coming up with this numbers based on enrollment, based on looking at needs. So they're trying to build in what they feel they may need. Um, I, I think what I hear is amongst the board is they want a better understanding of when you go to budget control, how you go to budget control, what you pull out of budget control. I mean, that's what I continuously hear, is a lack of understanding of how budget control is used. So, and maybe it's, maybe it's in the term budget control versus staffing. It's like I said at the last meeting, is there an account like this that needs to be in special ed so that we're not doing those big transfers, but that there's a pool of money when an additional student has a need? You know, when anything happens, that there's a place to go and use those resources so the district can react to what they need to react to. So I don't know. I, I, there's a lot of conversation about budget control, but nobody actually puts on the table what they want to understand about it. Everyone talks about these transfers, which to me makes sense in the course of the almost six years I've been on the board. If it's the naming of the account, or it's a, a very detailed explanation of what you can put in and what you can put out of budget control, well, then we should do that.
Uh, Mr. Maroney.
Uh, I think I agree with Duke, but I would, I would like a little more information on the ELL teacher because I'm still a little uncertain on it, but.
Okay. Mr. Rudel, am I correct that budget control is only accessed through board trans, board approval?
Yes.
Okay. Um, it seems like there's enough of a sense of a meaning to add ELL into the narrative.
So essentially, it's being reflected as an expense? Is that correct?
No, 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 no. It's just being added into the narrative that ELL might be used here.
Okay.
And then into the analysis, because I, I think you've been asked, I think a couple of board members have asked that you look at those enrollment numbers that came up tonight. So if you look at those enrollment numbers tonight, if you're counting ELL as one of those numbers and you move either way, you need to move with ELL too.
So Rich, you've looked at those enrollment numbers, Dr. Adley, every, everyone in the administration. I mean, you're, you're still comfortable with the number you have in the budget based on the enrollment numbers, based on the changes in January.
So based on?
Take the ELL out of it for a second.
So based on the January fifteenth enrollment and the demography report, there really isn't a significant change. So we are comfortable.
And Dr. De Silva, you've said you are comfortable with the ELL load at this point.
Yes, at this point I am, but it is a fluid population, so that's why I drew it to the superintendent's attention. At this point, we can cover our students for next school year if everything stays the same. If we receive some students and we leave some student, lose some students, we should still be able to cover them. If we increase and increase, it'll be tight. We will be creative. Students will get the services they need.
Okay. Anything else in administration or personnel, I'm sorry? Okay, RC nineteen, curriculum. Anything? Moving on. Uh, RC twenty, finance. Mrs. McCammon.
So I actually think I'm in the wrong spot, but I wanted to add sixty K for Open Gov, but I think you told me that's the wrong RC, right? I was supposed to put it actually in technology.
Um, if we would, if we were to add it, we would probably add it to software and technology, RC fifteen.
So you'd like to go back to technology, which is RC fifteen?
Software.
Sorry.
And answer the call of the Board of Finance for Open Gov. And you're putting a sixty thousand dollar?
That was my understanding from, from my analysis.
Yeah, we, we have a wee update.
Please give us a wee update.
So, um, I did meet with representatives from Open Gov for a demo. Uh, so the, the cost depends on how many modules you're gonna buy.
Yeah.
Uh, so the cost could range anywhere from sixty to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Do we know, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sixty is the budget module and then going up to one thirty?
No, so sixty would primarily just be like the transportation mod, or the transparency module.
Okay.
There's like a budget module, there's like a written narrative module, there's a number of other modules. So if you were to get the budget suite and the transparency module, you'll be closer to a hundred thousand dollars.
So that would be line or account two, five, zero, one, nine?
Uh, it's a software, so it would be in the software line item.
Is that computer software and supplies?
Uh, would be in.
Under RC fifteen?
RC fifteen.
Two, five, zero, one, nine?
Uh, one, three, zero, three, five, software means.
One, three, zero. Say it again, Mike, or you got a fridge?
One, three, zero, three, five.
One, three, zero, three.
Old habits die hard. And so Mrs. McCammon, you, we're sticking with the sixty.
I think, let's say an add and it, this, I just would rather be more general and say an add today, but it could be. Somewhere between sixty and a hundred and thirty.
Thirty.
So I guess have you, Rich, talked to folks at Town Hall as to what modules they're using that everyone seems to like in terms of, you know, how things are presented and how things are readable?
Um, so I haven't had the chance to talk to Jen about it. I believe they're using the transparency and budgeting module though.
Okay.
Is that something you could follow up in what they would, what would best merge the town side and the district side?
Yeah.
I mean, what's, I guess in terms of adding or talking about it in this budget, what's, in terms of your wee update, what's the, uh, what's the reality of moving forward and implementing this in this budget cycle? I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna talk to the town, we'd all like to see a demo or hear more about what we get out of it. To John's point, how does it align with, um, Town Hall and, you know, what those folks in finance are looking at? So is this realistically money we would spend in this budget season, or is that, what's the implementation timeline?
Uh, so if you were to implement it, it would be in, in this budget cycle.
Okay.
Um, it doesn't necessarily mean it would be usable during that budget cycle.
Okay.
Um, you would have to start to work on your chart of accounts, um, you'd have to do some work on the website, uh, the integration to Munis, so it's not a quick, uh, setup.
You're working on a chart of accounts and all that stuff right now.
So if it gets approved, it would start next year.
Right.
So really, if you were to do this, you would probably want to do your chart of accounts and then do Open Gov if you were to choose to do Open Gov.
You would do them at the same time?
No, you would probably want to get your chart of accounts first. So one of the questions we did ask was, if we were to redo our chart of accounts, what would that mean to the integration, um, within Open Gov? And they did say it would be a significant change, uh, because you're essentially taking all that data and then you'd have to basically redo it all, because you're redoing your account structure. Um, so it would take quite a bit longer to actually get that up and running. Um, we also did ask, because there was a question, is if any school districts in Connecticut use Open Gov? They did confirm there are no school districts in Connecticut or in New York that use Open Gov.
There are no school districts in Connecticut.
And so what you're looking at when you say sixty to a hundred thousand dollars, just so we can be informed on if we're doing a cut or an add, is, um, that's simply the software buy?
Uh, the software and implementation support from.
Oh, that is implementation.
And would you know what the annual fee is or annual maintenance or annual upkeep?
So it, uh, so it depends on which, how many modules you get. The, you know, the implementation portion was probably around forty thousand dollars. So if you went to that hundred thousand, you're looking at around sixty thousand dollars. Could be more or less depending on if you get all the suites, or if you get one suite or two suites or three suites.
So I guess the, the other question to ask, but not to be answered tonight, is I think there's just a broader kind of overview that has to be provided to us and your recommendations, but also do you all have the bandwidth to do something like this? You know, in terms of projects, you have a day job, you're updating the chart of accounts and doing that type of stuff. So to me, it's a resource issue too that has to be addressed.
So that's, yeah, let's have a broader conversation. We'll continue with our adds and our cuts for tonight.
Rich, can I just ask again? I know I'm being a nudge. Um, it's going into software maintenance, not computer software and supplies. Is that correct?
Correct. So it would be similar like where you have Munis right now. So you have Munis and software maintenance.
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I have the right account.
Just checking our notes. She's laughing because she's off the hook. I'm sorry, Dr. Adley.
I'm a dentist with an open mind. They're gonna need to convince me now, because, uh, just time on task for the minute, value for money for the minute, uh, how this helps us, they didn't convince me how it helps, helps our organization, right? Um, but I'm still not against the, the spirit of it, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the idea is to help our organization.
No, no, but, but I'm just.
I mean, that's pretty clear. It's help the community and transparency.
We should table this discussion.
Yeah, but this is a bigger conversation. We're on budget.
Okay.
Um, all right, so we went back to RC fifteen, so we were finished, we had finished up RC nineteen. Give us a second, curriculum. Uh, RC twenty, finance. Do I see any questions? None? RC twenty-one, library media. RC twenty-two, oh, library media? Oh, RC twenty-two, tech ed. Mrs. Stein was ready to go.
I'm gonna put an add, and I don't know under which line item. For sixty-three, one, one, six for project lead the way.
Sixty-three, one, one, six.
Dollars for project lead the way materials. I'm putting it out there for further discussion. I'm, I'm not really comfortable with the idea that we have invested in programming and then we're gonna stall it for a year. So I would like more information before I say we shouldn't have that in this budget.
Okay, Rich, do you know which account code we'd hit?
Um, I believe, um, I will double check, but I believe we had it in, um, classroom reference. I don't double check.
So two, three, zero, zero, two?
Two, three, correct.
We'll have that in our notes, and if you've got a different allocation, just let us know. Anyone else? RC twenty-three, summer school. Anything? RC twenty-four, special education. I can't tell if she had.
I keep adding stuff, so I'm, but I would like to highlight it, get in the contracted speech. And just double check, given the transfers we made. I know I've asked a million times. I don't know how other board members feel, but I just want to make sure that number is right.
So you would be looking to add or cut?
I would be looking to add. But I don't have a dollar number.
Okay.
So I think this goes back to Duke's point of when we're talking specifically about educate, uh, special education and how we do contingency planning, because I, I mean, I think administration has been clear that this is based on current IPs and they believe that this is an adjustment, that they paid out these contracts. Um, but I think the reason we end up hesitating is because there's always variability in this, in this budget. Um, and, you know, budget control just doesn't cover it. So whatever we do for this year, that we may be too far down the path to really do anything significant, but we keep running into this. And so I, I do think we need to have a conversation about what contingency planning looks like for special education specifically.
Anyone else on special education? RC twenty-five, fixed expenses.
So we should say here that, that we did get good news for health insurance.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Don't keep us waiting.
You buried the lead on that one.
Is, is it we good news or do we?
Like big good news.
Wee good news.
So there's seven other communities that will be part of the cohort with Anthem. And that, and that would result in a savings of about ninety-four thousand dollars.
How much, sorry?
Ninety-four.
So that.
So, so we'll offset some of these numbers here. Um, we would probably have to go into that, Richard, in about two weeks' time and, and into an agreement. Uh, we'll have to talk to representatives of the various unions. We'll have to talk to representatives of the various unions. But it's, it's miles to better. It's, we still budget eight point five, but we budget eight point five off, of, off the state plan, which is PPO. This is eight point five off a, off an HSI. So that's good news. Thank you, Richard, for working with those other communities. So, so anyway, that's the, that's the update, but we will have to come back and get approval to enter into that agreement pretty soon.
So that would potentially.
Super soon. So what does that look like?
Well, it depends on how the board ordinarily deals with healthcare and how you enter into that agreement. If you give us tasks and understand them to go ahead and execute that, or if you need another forum to discuss the detail even further, we can, we can accommodate that.
So I think, and Alan and Marge, correct me if I'm wrong, we have the ability, if it's a comparable healthcare system, to make the switch, right? So I suppose we'd have to go back to the union. Okay, so if it's, you could let us know if it's comparable. I don't know that everyone, although maybe you do, wants to see all, I'm sure, a hundred and twenty pages of whatever it is. But if it's comparable and we feel comfortable with that, we've handled it two ways in the past. But I think the faster you could get us information, then if anyone needs more. Does anyone feel like they need significantly more information on this switch? I'm seeing shakes of heads from.
No, no.
It just, it helps me if you.
Savings was the key information.
Yeah. And, and it's comparable to our teachers, so they have a similar plan. Okay, so it looks like you have the go ahead.
So this would potentially be an admin adjustment?
Yeah, an administrative, an administrative adjustment to the budget. It would neither be an add nor a cut.
And that would be to eight two zero zero three.
Eight two zero zero three.
I should just mention that you, just, just since we're talking about it, we do have a cap on the second year. We have to go in for two years, but we have a cap on the seven, on the second year of seven.
Seven nine five.
Seven nine five, so.
Okay. Anything else on fixed expenses? I'd like to, to relook at account eight four zero point zero one, the OPEB. You know, sometimes in small towns, there's like traditions that seem to exist. There, there's always this talk that OPEB was never going to negatively affect the Board of Education. This is a pretty significant hit this year, so I'd like to just really clarify. Rich, you can do that with Kate, I can do it with Kate, because kind of the old say so's that I have, or just give that to you.
Sure.
I'd just like to really clarify so we know going forward. There, there seems to be kind of stories out there that when the Board of Education took this on, it would not negatively be affected by OPEB. And this is such a significant number, I just wanna know if that's the case or not the case. And if it's not the case, then we all kinda know and any kind of old stories around, we can put to bed.
So there is two, I mean, there's really two accounts that affect OPEB. It's the revenue distribution and then the expense. When you look at them as, as a net together, it's actually about thirteen thousand dollars in the positive. So it's not really a hit to the budget. It looks like one line item is a hit. When you factor in the, the other line item, it's essentially a one.
Oh, perfect. Then I withdraw my question because there we go. RC twenty-six, the early learning program. Any questions? Ads, cuts? Seeing none. Capital. Anything on capital?
I guess my question would be, is the administration looking at Mike Lynch's recommendations of things he could accelerate? And will they be coming forward with those?
So I think, I think we have settled on, on a, on a plan.
Okay.
And I think we can update this with one page capitals, which we have, Michael's already done that, so we can update that.
So Mike, with our big project coming up next year, four million dollars. Do we need, at times, the Board of Finance has granted us money to study, to make sure that our costs are as close as they can be. Is a study helpful, necessary, something that we could put into this capital budget so that we know that our four million, to help us anticipate, at times they've said, go spend this money, so your numbers are hard. Is that something we should request?
That was it, three hundred thousand?
Yeah, but I'm wondering, could we move the study up?
That's for the study.
Did I miss it?
Excuse me?
OPEB and then capital, I'm getting hit tonight.
Yeah, because they have three hundred thousand to design the HRA system.
Right, that includes, we'll get the, the engineers' probable cost estimate. So, and that'll be broken down, it's similar to what they did for the air conditioning work that we did, the electric, that we put into all the buildings.
So that'll be the whole, that's the design and the study that will hit the four mil, four point two. Okay.
So we'll be ready to go.
Perfect, I love that. Thank you.
Mike, I'm sorry, could you just stay there for a second? I see in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, a big number coming for Royal. Is there anything that we can do in advance? Is there any study that could be done in advance for that, or is that not necessary?
No, I think that's, because a lot of that work is undersized classrooms, what do you do with the first grade wing, small cafeteria, you know, there's, there's a lot in that building to look at. And that number there is just heating, ventilating, air conditioning upgrades.
So there's nothing that could be done potentially next year?
Well, I think we're, it's gonna get touched on by Northeast Collaborative.
Right, Northeast, yeah, Portables. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Going once, going twice, any RC, anyone felt they missed? Alrighty. We have something to look at. Okay, then we will move forward. Thank you, everybody. To the further discussion and possible action on the Board Master Agenda, Dr. Adley.
Yes. So I tried to include one or two things, like the athletic deep dive. I held it in there as a tentative date, not that's a date particularly, but just a reminder. So if I list, if something's not listed there, it's not because I've forgotten about it, it's just, we still need to discuss the best place for it.
Well, and typically the master agenda comes out of goals and objectives. And then what we do is throughout the years, things come up, we add on. So part of it is planning and making sure that people are ready to present to the board, so. Yes?
One of our policies states that we're supposed to have a self-evaluation.
Yes.
Is that, would that be something that went in here?
I would, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I mean, I would make the recommendation that the board does that in a, at a retreat session, early on in the summer. So, and look at that and board roles and functions.
Because there hasn't been done in recent years, correct?
No, we've done a self-evaluation. I think that what you're referring to and you pointed out even before you came on the board is the policy says a written self-evaluation. And the written part, not, but there's been recordings of the evaluation.
And then something that Ms. Ritchie brought up is, talk about the kind of committee roles and subcommittee roles and how we, as a board view, there were also, is that something we can put in the master agenda at some point?
Dr. Adley and I talked about it once I received your email. Our initial kind of thought, although feel free to jump in here, was that's also part of a retreat because there's some long traditions and that if we wanna change them, we should do that all kind of part of a self-evaluation. But that was the initial thoughts.
Right, I would, typically I would do that as, how are we functioning together? What are the roles and responsibilities? Is there any changes to be made to committees? Are the committees functioning properly, organizationally? Typically, I would be used to doing the evaluation and that all at the same time.
So we're gonna have committees doing different things up until then?
So I think it's more your description of different things. I think different actions probably call for different reactions from committee members. But I think it's also appropriate to clarify within the committees, the policy allows for certain things other than voting. So certainly you can clarify at the committee level, but it's never really been a question, a question before. It doesn't mean that's not a valid question to answer, but sometimes there's an issue that the board might remand down that says, we would like you to give a recommendation, and sometimes it's a review. I don't think, I'll tell you my opinion, although certainly the board can weigh in. I don't think they're necessarily in opposition. But certainly in your committees, you can discuss how you would like that to work as well.
With one provision, I think that the decisions are made here at the board table and we have to be careful that committees aren't perceived as making decisions on behalf of the board. There's work that's done at the committee level, but the, the decision-making and continuing discussion and questioning needs to happen here at the full board table. But I, I feel very strongly that the committee roles are not decision-making roles, so I'll just.
Yeah, no, just, every board member, every board, every nine board member is responsible for their own vote and they're based on the work they've done there. I mean, it's why you heard Dr. Landon recommend, he doesn't like committees, because he wants to make sure all board members, you know, are feel fully informed. It's why your other people say, well, I, you know, Dr. Brennan used to say, we can get a lot of work done out of committees because they can do a lot of pre-work. And that's why it's probably best for a retreat, because we can really have a full understanding. And Dr. Adley, since he's not going anywhere, can certainly give us his experience.
Where'd that come from?
Well, I mean, part of it is, we've had, we've had, we have tradition, we have a policy. We, and, and I don't find them in opposition with each other, we also have had different recommendations. So I think you kinda need to synthesize all of that and decide as a group, what's the best way forward. But I would agree with Mrs. Ritchie, and that's why committees don't have binding votes. Everything, the board, the board votes and board members are really only board members in board meetings, so.
That's a bundle there, isn't it?
Yeah.
I know this is early to talk about it, but the retreat, when, where do we see it squeezing in? So usually we do it sometime in July, so is that still the thought?
Usually we do it sometime in the summer, because it's generally a, a lengthy day. And so we have often found when scheduling, people have the most flexibility. And quite frankly, for the administration who give us their whole day, children aren't in school and school's not in session.
We, we can start that process now through a doodle calendar to see like just how easy that's gonna be.
Mrs. McCammon?
So I certainly understand that there's some stuff to be scheduled on here, but there were a couple of things I was really looking for sooner than later. The first was cybersecurity. I really, really, really want to see that soon, please. And then the second thing was, we talked about in negotiations process, and given that that kicks off in the summer, I think that just needs to show up, you know, in, in the spring, so that the board can see what it is.
Say that again, Jill.
A, a negotiations process, just codifying that.
We've talked about more specifically.
So the superintendent and I can, will take cybersecurity under consideration. And then negotiations is fairly straightforward, so I think as soon as, as soon as maybe just administratively possible, we can get that out to the board, certainly the process. Because it's, it's fairly regulated. So hopefully we can get that out sooner than later to you.
And would the negotiating committee then be giving periodic updates to the board? Or is it the executive session?
That's executive session, yes. Anything else? So with that, can I entertain a motion, Mrs. McCammon?
Just the process for understanding how, as, so there were a number of things that do need to be added in the future from a process perspective. Are you just planning to bring the master agenda back when you have a session?
Yeah, I just want to, with my colleagues here, just do a reflective time as to when the best time to schedule some of those things are.
Yeah, so I, then again, I think we need to go back to what the master agenda is. The master agenda is tied to goals and objectives. There are then other issues the board might bring up, like cybersecurity, right? Which is not necessarily in the master agenda, that, that is just a matter of scheduling. So you might not see it on the master agenda, but it doesn't mean that it won't come up on the agenda. I don't know that we wanna change what the master agenda is to everyone sending a list of what they wanna see on it. But if you send in a list of what you'd like to see, we can talk about it as board and make sure it gets on the agenda. I don't think they're mutually exclusive.
I, I would disagree about the, I think that the master agenda gets populated multiple ways and that it should start with certainly historically what we do over the year. Secondarily, it would get populated at the beginning of the year with your goals and objectives and how you line that up. But I do think the purpose of having a master agenda you vote on is to establish accountability among the board so that we all understand what's coming up along the way.
That's fine, you can disagree and redesign it. I can tell you what it is. And so you can disagree and we can agree to redesign it, that's fine. I just, what we're looking at now is that, and if we wanna redesign it, that's fine. But that's not what it has been or currently is, which is why it looks the way it does.
Wasn't there like a field trip on it though, or voting? Did I, did I see that correctly?
I think things that come up annually. Yeah, that come up every single year, end up on there.
Seems like a hybrid.
Yeah. Well, guys, I, we can do that, but then what we can't do is have one board member give a list of like, this is what I wanna see, what we should then go down and say, do we as a board agree all these things? Because if Jill had some really good ideas, but Katie might have eight ideas and Burke might have ten ideas. So when Alan and I sit and do it, we have to decide, are we trying to fit in all forty-five ideas? Or what's the consensus of the board that like, on the master agenda, we really feel it's important we hit these, these essential topics? And then besides that, we're kind of adding in where there's time. And that's where it came from, goals and objectives, to see what the board agreed on, are the goals and objectives are showing up? Because in all honesty, even the list Jill gave us, why all valuable, I mean, I think, Alan, what was your comment on it? Like, it would take a year to hit some of these. Like, we just, we just need to know what the board really is looking to grasp at, and that's what goals and objectives is. So maybe that conversation needs to be really more robust and participatory from people at that time so that it informs the chair and the superintendent going forward. Because if, if you have, if you have five and Dave has a different five, okay, now we have ten. So that's why a board orders work together.
I, respectfully, the, things come up during the year that need to be accounted for. So for example, cybersecurity popped up as an issue that Cabe thought that was tremendously important. We got multiple emails in July about the need to discuss it as a board. And so I think the reason, part of why you bring this to the board for a vote, if it were just a standing order that we had voted on back in July, when we established kind of the history and the goals and objectives, then there would be no need to vote going forward. The reason you would continue to look at it and vote is because you want to have some level of responsiveness built into your process and some level of accountability.
So Mr. Superintendent, maybe you can talk about how you wanna do this? Because I, what I need from the board is to not get a list from one person and then the superintendent and I say what to do with this list. We can vote on adding or not adding, we can vote. But last week, Jill, you had, I think, some very good issues that came up. But unless the board agrees that those all go on the agenda.
Right.
So we didn't do that last time, you just gave a list.
Exactly. So if they don't fit, then, then that's great. But that, but the expectation would be that the, that they come back and see, you know, they're not on the agenda, it's not a good time for it, you know, or something.
I think the expectation is to be when we give a list, what we should do is call for a board vote. Are these items the board would like to see on the agenda?
May I start on a regular agenda, I'm sorry?
I think would, yeah, yeah.
I think we need to table this to the board retreat, but.
Well, I could, I could say.
We can table this like ten minutes, yeah, so.
Well, there's gotta be a process to get things on a regular meeting.
And there is, there is, there is, and it's in policy. And also I think every time we've received it, we've, we've been as responsible we can. I think last time was hard because there were so many items.
So I've been asking for cybersecurity since July. We're at six, seven months. That's way too long for, to not have.
Okay, so would the board like cybersecurity on the agenda, Mr. Sini?
This is not the process.
No, it is, because Jill's saying she's asked for a long time and I think what, well, maybe the superintendent has some suggestions on how to move this forward.
Well, certainly, certainly with cybersecurity, like, that's an executive session thing and we can do that, like, that's fairly easy to do very quickly, right? I will say, look, perhaps I didn't do a good enough job of this calendar this, this time around, okay? Because most of my focus has been on all this budget stuff. And this is, this is to, a wee bit secondary degree, so I think with a wee bit more reflection on that, I could have probably massaged some things easier. But I do have to get a wee sense sometimes of what's a board request versus what's an individual request. Because it just gets wee bit on wee like, right? But I still think the, the document can work as a guiding document for the board.
It's a living document, do you think?
Yes, and so. Perhaps I've contributed to that a wee bit, okay, in terms of not capturing or. I, I think we can have a, I think we can capture what everybody wants to be on, for the most part, right, what the board wants.
But just to be clear, the board policy is that any member can raise an issue for the board to address.
No, can request an item to be on the agenda, yeah.
Easy request. At some point, you may or may not put it on the agenda. Then there's the right for the board to vote to put it on the agenda, okay, so.
But it sounds to me like cybersecurity is something that the administration feels they can address at some point. Does it need to be on the master agenda or can we just?
Well, so that's kind of my point. All requests for cybersecurity have been passed forward to the administration. When they're ready to bring it forward. forward to the administration. When they're ready to bring it forward, they will, but Mrs. McCammon feels like her requests have waited seven months, so. You know, that's just where we are at, at the moment.
Well, does the administration feel they can address it in a timely manner, or are we going to be waiting another seven months?
No, you're not going to wait another seven months. See, we can do it at the next executive session, and believe me, the, the, uh, I will say to the board that the idea of like waiting seven months for that is not, that's not an indication, we're not ready, we're not, we don't care about it. Um, I don't know what it is an indication, I'll be honest with you, but, uh, we're ready at any particular time to talk about cybersecurity.
Okay, so maybe we can look forward.
So we can do that.
Yeah, great. Any other questions on the master agenda?
Just, just one last one. Now, our goals and objectives is out of date because we pushed the storage as a goal. So when do we update the goals and objectives of the board?
In July.
Yearly.
Yearly.
So we're not going to make any adjustments in the meantime?
We don't typically.
We can change the way we run this board.
We, we can, but then I, I need, I heard a request to update, I think, to add portables, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So. I, I.
I mean, we have a study of.
Guys, I'm one and nine.
Goals and objectives, and we have a storage facility that we've listened to the administration and pushed out. It just seems like now they're out of date, why wouldn't we update them?
Well, it sounded to me at facilities, you discussed a little bit how there needed to be a little bit of work done, and maybe Mike, oh, he's disappeared, that maybe there was a little bit of work that needed to be done, so are we ready to talk about storage, or?
No, we, we had decided to take it off.
We had decided to take it off.
Off.
Right, that's what I thought.
We're not going to do that until July, it just.
And I think of the goals, our goals and, and objectives as sort of our roadmap for the year, and knowing that it's going to last year and, and it's a year out, it's not a living document in the same way it hasn't been traditionally. I, you know, we can talk about it at the retreat, but it's sort of setting our yearly goals, and then we reflect on them in our retreats, where we are on those goals. So to the point of storage, well, we didn't do that, so what are we doing next year? I mean, that's sort of how we've informed our discussions.
Yeah.
Whereas the master agenda, I will say, we have made changes, but when I think back to things we've added, for instance, an update from department chairs wasn't on there last year. We asked for it because it was tied to our goal and objective. So we have, it's, I think we should discuss it, but I think we've been sort of pretty true to the goals and objectives.
I would, I would agree that, um, and John, things don't have to be the same way, but it's also sometimes hard to change midstream, which is why the July is, retreat is really important, because we do reflect and say, we had this goal, why didn't we meet it? What do we need to do going forward? You know, can we bring it back and erase it? Sure, but I'm not sure that that keeps the document living as people go back and say, okay, why wasn't this achieved? What changed it? Um, you know, that's, that's certainly how I feel, but, but that's where we can have these discussions, but it's, I would agree with you, a great reason is not because we've always done so, right? And that's one of my guiding, that's one of my guiding principles. But I also think it's also hard to change mid-year, and that's why those retreats are, are super important.
I think it's a, a bit challenging. I asked, this has come up a couple of times. So I think maybe we also just need to talk about the full communication loop, because if we make a request for something, you go on an agenda, and then it just disappears, then I, there's not an understanding of whether or not it was just a request that couldn't be honored, or it got forgotten, or something to that effect. So when there are requests for agenda items, such as bringing back the goals and objectives, if, if we're not going to do that, then we just need to close that loop. Um, you know, I.
I don't think it was decided, I think we went into budget season. I think right now we're having the discussion, but I don't think it was a preclusion. Um, I think we went into budget season, quite frankly, and, and that's been the focus. So imperfect as it may be, I think that's what's going on.
I, we just don't want to get to the point of we're making a motion to add something to the agenda, getting the two-thirds vote. We shouldn't be operating like that as a board. If, if there's enough consensus to put something on for discussion, the chair and administration at the right moment should be putting it on the agenda, I guess, is.
Have we, have we not?
I think typically we do, do that.
Have we not? Because the only.
I'm hearing certain months.
The only person I've heard from cybersecurity is Ms. McCammon, and every request has been passed on to the administration.
Right, um, I, I've asked formally to discuss the committee, and now we're pushing it off to the retreat, so.
So you asked formally Sunday, I think? And it's Tuesday.
Right.
I don't, I don't think we need to maybe, um, worry about past, I think what we're trying to do is say, how are we going to work going forward? So what is the function of the master agenda? What is, how are we, are we using goals and objectives? Um, when we make a request, what happens to it? How are we going to close that loop? I think.
Great. Let's move on. Is there, um, a motion for further discussion and possible action on the ma- board master agenda? Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Mr. Janine, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Um, personnel action items, Mrs. Cyan.
So I'm not sure that the PAR was attached to the agenda when I tried to print things out. It, it's just one retirement, a psychologist at the high school, I can pass these out to you. Um, it's Beth Shapiro.
Yeah, it was in there.
Okay, it was?
It was, yeah.
When I tried to print and.
It might have run out of paper, but I.
No, 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 then, okay, well, anyway, I'm glad it was there, and so it's just the one retirement.
Um, may I have a motion to approve the PAR dated Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty? Mr. Brown and Mr. Maroney, all in favor? Thank you, that is unanimous. Is there any public comment this evening?
Lori Olson, sixteen Littlebrook Road, North. I wonder what message we're sending to the school parents when we tell them that we can't add buses because it's too late in the budget cycle, um, but we can add a hundred thousand dollars for software. Um, I'd rather see that money distributed directly to things that affect students, like safety. Thank you.
Amy Zerby, nine Morehouse Drive. As you consider cutting Chromebooks and freshman iPads, I ask that you think of the following. Do you want the current eighth graders to continue using their Chromebooks into high school? Do you expect them to buy their own devices, or are you shifting away from one-to-one altogether, which would have significant impact on how the curriculum is delivered?
Teresa Voat, twenty-two Circle Road. This was an interesting meeting tonight. Um, listening to you guys add things to the budget and talk about, I mean, you're looking at the wrestling map, but things that were originally cut from the budget, yet now we're talking about up to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in software that does not benefit our students, that's a rethink. I think the open.gov conversation needs to come to a close, if that's how much it's going to cost.
Any other public comment this evening? Can I entertain a motion to adjourn? Mr. Maroney and Mr. Burke, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, everybody.